Evening and welcome to the January 28, 2025 Eugene Planning Commission Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. My name is Jason Lear and I'm Chair of the Eugene Planning Commission. To begin this evening, I'd like to call on Commissioner Ramey for the city's land acknowledgement statement.
Thank you, Chair Lear. Since time immemorial, the Kalapulia people have been the indigenous stewards to our region, building dynamic communities, maintaining balance with wildlife, and enacting sustainable land practices. This land acknowledgement is a way of resisting the erasure of indigenous histories and to honor native communities by inviting truth and reconciliation. Following treaties between 1851 and 1855, Kalapulia people were disposed of their indigenous homeland by the United States government and forcibly removed to the Coast Reservation in western Oregon. As we consider the impacts of colonization, we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of displaced indigenous people. The city of Eugene is built within the traditional homelands known as the Kalapulia Elyhei. Kalapulia descendants are citizens of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ronde, community of Oregon, and the Confederated Tribes of the Soletz Indians of Oregon. They continue to make contributions in our communities here and across the lands. We express our respect for the inherent political sovereignty of all federally recognized tribal nations and indigenous people who live in the state of Oregon and across the nation. Therefore, the planning commission recognizes that what we do today will affect the many generations who come after us.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramey. It was actually supposed to be Commissioner Bailing on deck, but you did a great job.
Hey, wait a minute.
Thank you to everyone joining us in this virtual meeting format. Today, we'll be deliberating on the appeal of the hearing official hearings officials decision denying the Braywood Hills tentative planned unit development and tentative subdivision land use applications. Anyone wishing to join the meeting online can do so by following the instructions listed on the agenda for this meeting. Planning Commission meetings can also be viewed by watching the live stream available on our website or the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21. Before we begin, we have two commissioners who are unable to attend the public hearing. And we would like to get their verbal confirmation that both Commissioner Bailing and Commissioner Ramey have viewed the video of the public hearing and reviewed the record materials for this application and appeal.
Yes, I have.
Thanks, Commissioner Bailing. Commissioner Ramey?
Uh, yes, I have.
It was a lot to review. Um, thank you very much. As a reminder, the Eugene Planning Commission held a public hearing on January 14th, 2025. Our interested parties had the opportunity to provide testimony on the appeal. Following the hearing, the record was closed. For our first agenda item, I'd like to turn it over to Nick Joyello to begin the staff presentation. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I'm going to share a screen and we are here tonight to go over the deliberations for the Braywood Hills Third Edition Appeal. So tentative plan unit development and subdivision. I'm assuming everybody can see my screen. I should have. Yeah, okay, good. So tentative plan unit development and tentative subdivision. Trying to get my... There we go. Just to make sure everyone's familiar with the site and to cover it all, the site is outlined here in black. We have Hawkins Lane that comes down and provides access to the site. This portion right here is a portion that is constructed of Randy Lane. This is the constructed portion of Black Tail Drive. Uh, they have an intersection right there. Randy Lane also continues on the east side and ends at a stub right under that little bit of the yellow pointer at the eastern edge of the property. And here is a site plan of the site as the applicant has proposed initially 39 lots. And you can see Randy Lane here, Black Tail. This is Hawkins Lane coming down. And the proposed extension of Randy Lane that would come to this point with a turnaround. I think everybody's familiar with the site by now. We've talked about this in the last meeting. So just a brief background, uh, it's an application for 39 lots. Residential lots, as I said, also has the ability for middle housing on these lots. The hearings official decision denied the application back on September 6th, 2024. And therefore, the applicant filed an appeal with 10 appeal issues that we'll be going over. Some of those tonight, if not all of them. We had a public hearing on this issue back on January 14th, and tonight is our first deliberations after the public hearing and the close of record. The next deliberations of meeting is scheduled for February 18th. And if there's another one needed, we'll schedule another one after, uh, during that time we need it. And at this point, uh, I, oh, well, I need to introduce, um, we have our principal planner here, Gabe Flock. And we have Assistant City Attorney Lauren Summers, uh, who are going to tag team with me on a lot of these issues. And right now, uh, I think Lauren was going to speak to you about evidentiary and argument issues, uh, along with the testimony that has come in.
Thanks, Nick. So can everyone hear me? Just double check in. Okay. Um, Lauren Summers, Assistant City Attorney. Uh, as we discussed at the public hearing for this appeal, there are some limitations on what the planning commission can consider when acting as a quasi judicial decision maker and in the procedural posture of an appeal. So the two limitations are the planning commission cannot consider new evidence that was not presented to the hearings official. And the planning commission is limited to consideration of the issues raised in the appeal. So if there's something that the hearings official said or decided that you as a planning commission think you would have made a different decision, but it's not one of the issues raised in the applicant's appeal, then it's outside your scope and you don't get to consider it. So that being said, there has been some testimony that has come in between the hearings officials decision and the close of the record. And a few pieces of that testimony staff has gone through and looked at all of the testimony. With the, the, that kind of lends on with those limitations in mind, no new evidence and only issues raised by the applicant in their appeal statement. And there were a few pieces of testimony that staff determined did include new evidence or went beyond the issues raised by the applicant. And so tonight we are going to ask you to take a look at those pieces of testimony and we, it sounds a little bit harsh, but we ask you to reject and not consider them. So what that means is you are looking at the evidence and you are saying we will not take this into consideration as part of our deliberations or decision making on this appeal. This is outside of our scope. We've identified it as outside of our scope and we're not going to consider it. And as part of this, um, the packet for tonight, you received a draft final order that lists out all of those pieces of testimony that staff identified as outside of the scope, either new evidence or outside the appeal issues identified. Um, Nick, can you go back one slide?
Yeah, I'm having some difficulty with their, uh, let's see, it's not responding. There we go.
Okay. So one of the questions that comes up sometimes when, um, a decision maker is thinking about what, if there's new evidence that's been presented that was not presented to the hearings official, what is evidence and what is evidence as opposed to argument? Because argument before the planning commission is okay as long as it's about the issues identified in the appeal. New evidence before the planning commission is not okay. And that's something that you would need to reject and not consider. So we've included the definitions of evidence and argument on the slide in front of you to see you can kind of see what state law says the difference between those two things is. And evidence is kind of what you would think. It's facts, documents, data. So you'll see in the draft final order, the pieces of testimony that you're being asked to reject because they are new evidence are typically things like a graph, a photo, new, you know, new numbers, new data, um, that the hearings official didn't have in front of her. And then argument is again, sort of just what it sounds like. Analysis assertions, somebody taking a position about something, but not providing you with new data or factual information. And so like I said before, argument is generally okay unless it's about something that is not an appeal issue identified by the appellate. And Nick, you can go ahead and bump over. Next slide. Awesome. And then, so we just are throwing up for you and for those who might be watching the specific code provisions that constrain the planning commission in this case. So as you can see, Eugene Code Section 9.7655 sub 2 says that, um, when we're in the posture of an appeal to the planning commission from a decision by the hearings official as we are here, no new evidence will be accepted. Next slide. And then Eugene Code Section 9.7655 sub 3 talks about what needs to be included in the appeal, a statement of the issues that the appellant is appealing. And they have to explain how the hearings official, in, in their eyes at least, got it wrong. And, um, again, that final sentence, the basis of the appeal is limited to the issues raised during review of the original application. So you, you've got these sideboards on what you can do. So I think, Nick, are those all the slides related to testimony?
Yes.
Okay. So what? What staff is proposing is that if planning commission feels comfortable, you act on all of the pieces of testimony outlined in the draft final order at once. So you say, you know, somebody makes a motion to reject and not consider all the pieces of testimony identified in the draft final order. If any planning commissioners are not comfortable with that or want to talk more about specific pieces of testimony that staff have identified, we can certainly do that before the motion. So I guess I would turn it back to Chair Lear to see if there are any questions or comment about staff's recommendation on the testimony to be rejected. And then we can move to a motion if someone is ready to make it.
Okay. So does, do any planning commissioners have any questions? Um, so you want us to just kind of jump into consideration right now, Lauren?
If you're, I mean, if that's something that the commission has come.
So as per the suggestion that we adopt the staff's recommendation regarding rejection of certain testimony that doesn't comport with the requirements of what testimony can include. Does anyone have any questions or want to discuss this? Or does somebody have a motion to accept the staff recommendation as proposed in the draft order? Commissioner Bailey?
Yes, my question is, uh, in your review of your testimony, did you include the testimony that came in between one o'clock on the 14th and the close of record? Because there was one more group of things sent to us by Nick. Did you include a review of those?
Yes.
Okay.
And just to be clear, staff has reviewed all of the testimony that has been provided to planning commission. And there are only a few pieces that staff is recommending that you reject and not consider, and those are listed in the draft final order.
And, and just for more specific reference, I'll jump in here, uh, and say that that is listed. Uh, I believe it's items one through nine on pages nine through 11 of the final order, if you wanted to look back at the packet materials. Uh, if, if there is interest in a need, we can, we can pull those up on the screen and walk through it. But what Lauren's suggesting is, is a single motion if, if the comfort level and familiarity is there among the commissioners.
So do any commissioners have any other questions about this? We could take a little bit of a straw poll if we're not quite there on being, being ready to vote or put forward a motion. I don't see any other questions at the moment. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the testimony and the proposed rejections of the testimony? That would not be allowed by code. Well, I guess I'll just ask for a little bit of a straw poll here. Maybe we can look at, we're ready to accept the staff recommendations. We're not ready to accept the staff recommendations or need more information. So if you're ready to accept the staff recommendations, maybe you could raise your hand. Okay. And then it looks like that's everybody. So I don't think we have to go through the other options. Do you want us to have a more formal vote on that, Lauren, or is that sufficient for now?
Yes, please.
Formal vote?
Yes. Commissioner Edwards, I see you have your hand.
Happy to make a motion. I'm just struggling to find the right language. So I apologize. Uh, I, I moved to accept the staff recommendation with regards to the testimony to, um, to, to rejecting, uh, testimony that the planning commission should not consider.
Can I, could I help you with the little?
Yes, you may. Absolutely. Always, Lauren.
May I suggest, um, move to reject and not consider the testimony identified in items one through nine on pages eight through 11 of the packet. You can just say so moved.
I can say so moved, so.
Seconded.
My motion.
Moved and seconded. Um, all in favor, please raise your hands. Any opposed? Please raise your hands. So that is unanimous among everybody that is present. I didn't actually see Commissioner Isaacs in there. Let me see if I can get everybody on my screen at the same time. There we go. Okay. Well, perfect. So that was the first issue. And then are we going to go into topic by topic now? Is that the idea? Should I go back on?
Yep. All right. So I think at this point, we'll turn it back to Nick to tee up, uh, and we, like you suggested, we'll kind of walk through each appeal issue. And start to talk about the substance of each one. If there are questions based on our introduction that Nick provides and, and whatnot, we can, we can start with that as each appeal issue arises. Um, and I think we'll begin with appeal issue one, which also happens to relate to, uh, an evidentiary question. Then I'll turn it back to Nick.
Oh, and I guess before that real quick, I just say that, um, we're going to just move in the order, the general outline of the draft final order that's proposed in the AIS. And we do want to finish on schedule tonight at 7:30. So we're going to see how many of these topics we can walk through, talk about next steps. If we're moving quickly, we may be able to dispense with these topics. And if not, we'll have opportunities to deliberate about this further. Go ahead, Nick.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, yeah, appeal issue one is that the applicant argues that the hearings official aired when she rejected rebuttal evidence submitted by the applicant during the second open record period on August 14th of 2024. Just for, uh, and we've outlined all this in our, uh, reports to you. And so I don't, you know, I don't want to go deep into it. There's a lot of stuff in there, but I just want to kind of give you the general overview and some you can start discussing if that's how you want to do this. But basically, the hearings official findings were that she rejected their evidence submitted in the second open record period because, um, of this notion of no new evidence, uh, not being able to be submitted. And we articulated in our, uh, I want to keep calling it a staff report, but the first one we did at the public hearing back on, uh, on the 14th was an AIS or Agenda I summary. So I'll refer to this Agenda I summary. And we articulated how, um, some of the direction that we had put up on the screen was incorrect. There is this notion of no new evidence, but you can submit responsive evidence in rebuttal to things that came in in the first period. And what we've outlined is we believe the applicant did do that. Uh, and that new evidence in that sense, since it was responsive to the evidence that came in specifically, uh, that came in from staff in some requirements for a, a, a different condition of approval. And that we believe, uh, as we're recommending, that you reverse the hearings official on this issue and consider all of the evidence that they submitted in the second open record period as responsive evidence. And if, uh, either Lauren or Gabe want to add anything to that, feel free.
Only to, um, recommend if commissioners want more detail in the draft final order we presented for tonight's meeting. I think it, this issue begins on page 12 or so, and we actually have a list and an explanation of how uh, we believe Mr. Close's argument and evidence is responsive, um, basically starting on page 14. There's a bulleted list there if you wanted to look at it. And so we walked through it carefully, I think, is the point, um, in terms of, of identifying where and how it's responsive to, to what already included in the record.
Anything else from you, Nick?
No. Thank you, Gabe.
Looks like Commissioner Beeson, you have your hand up?
I do. I, I guess I just kind of coming out of the chute here, I would say I'd agree that we, the planning commission should reverse this order. I went through all, all the material pretty carefully and, uh, including the draft findings. And, uh, I think after you kind of cut through all that, at least in my opinion, it, uh, it seemed pretty clear to me that the applicant testimony, uh, I, I was able to distinguish between round one, two, and three, and the, and the testimonies submitted in Apple, in, uh, round two was in fact rebuttal to evidence submitted, I guess, round one or previous to that. Uh, it, it felt at that point pretty clear to me. So I, I would agree to reverse.
I'll jump in and just say from the information provided and kind of reviewing it carefully, I agree with Commissioner Beeson about the grounds to reverse the decision to admit the additional evidence. And also, of course, note the mistake regarding the evidentiary procedures that should probably not be held against the appellant. Does anyone else have any comments on this or any questions for staff or any other deliberation? Commissioner Edwards?
I just have a procedural question. I'm just wondering how we plan on kind of tackling this process. Are we, are we going to straw poll? Are we gonna, um, I'm, I'll just, I'll just say that unless I have comments to the contrary of anything that staff has, has suggested, I don't, you know, if I have something to add or respond to, but I just wondered if we were planning on straw polling and then doing a vote on everything at the end. Is that the process that we wanted to, to follow? I don't want to feel obligated to comment on every single one if, if, because I don't, you know, that's it.
Yeah, there's going to be a straw poll after we consider each appeal issue. And then, you know, but kind of based on how that's going, how quickly we move, we may propose to just a, a, adopt that order at the end, or we may have to do some modifications, but we'll plan on doing a poll to kind of feel where the commission's at after each issue is reviewed.
Perfect. Thank you.
Controversial or have more deliberation than others. So you don't have to necessarily all have comments probably on each one of the appeal issues. If you review the material and formed an opinion. Are there any other comments or any other deliberation on this first appeal issue? If not, I guess I'll move to take a straw poll. All those who would be, uh, in favor of adopting the staff's decision, which would be reversing the hearing official's decision regarding the rejection of evidence. If you want to just put your hand up for now. And it looks like we've got all voting members voting in favor of that in the straw poll. So we can take note of that and move on to the next issue. We'll pass it back off to you, Nick.
Okay, thank you. I got, uh, let me get, uh, this ready again to share. Scroll through all the slides to Scroll through all the slides to get back to where I was every time, so. So. And it's not responding. I'm having a little bit of technical issues once in a while where it doesn't want to respond to me trying to get to the next slide, but eventually it works. So. Bear with me if it takes a few extra seconds. Appeal issue number two. Uh, is a. Is a pretty substantial. It's a big one. Uh, this is where the applicant argues that because the subject property is listed on the scenic sites working paper. Uh, figure H two. It is a goal five resource, therefore. The tree preservation standards that are referenced in our code. Do not apply, and the hearings official aired by denying the applicant's application based on this issue. Regarding goal five resources and the inclusion of the scenic sites working paper H two as evidence. So basically. The hearings official. Did not find evidence to determine the entire site was on the goal five inventory. Based on uh. Issues with the H two map and whether it was actually acknowledged by the state and she has a lot of um. She spent a lot of time in her uh decision talking about this issue, so don't want to go into too much detail myself, but uh. We're asking tonight that you reverse that. And we've articulated that in our uh agenda item summary and in the final draft order. And find that the. Figure H two map is a document that forms a city's acknowledged goal five inventory. Therefore, the entire site is goal five and is exempt from tree preservation and removal standards under uh our Eugene code. And I want to jump to the next slide, and then I'm going to hand it over to um Lauren to explain this complicated goal five issue and its history a little bit. This is the figure H two map that is referred to and that the hearings official had issue with determining whether this was sufficient enough to help. Uh, to decide whether the entire site is goal five. And what we're talking about is how we figure out using this map. And I'm going to get my little pointer out here. How we use this map. To decide in an area like this where the subject property is, and we showed that to you, how we do that, where we look at. Aerial maps and in GIS data that we have. We know where the property is here, and then we line it up with things that. Match this map when we blow it up and we determine that properties right here in this area and this. Little blue clouded. Uh, stuff is uh, or the. I guess the legend calls this prominent plentiful vegetation in that uh map, the H two map. I want to show you also uh what we're talking about here overall with the whole site. You, we have, and and this is part of what makes the goal five discussion complicated. We have an acknowledged goal five stream right. Running right across the property through here. And you can see the purple boundaries on both sides. This is the protected area. And so anything that happens in this area has to go through a standards review. So the proposed road that goes through here. Has already been acknowledged in our. Reports that they will have to get a standards review to be able to construct anything here. And so this area is definitely protected. Uh, there's been no argument about that. That's in our resources and uh everything. The other thing about this site. Aside from the H two map, which says the whole site is. On our inventory is we have these things you'll see outlined in red here. These are acknowledged wetlands, but they're unprotected wetlands. What that means is they can get a fill permit and go through the state to get a fill permit. And do offsets to to be able to do that. What they've proposed is some of these areas in blue, they're not going to touch, but. These other areas obviously will have streets coming through, private streets. And then individual homes will be built throughout. And you can see. A lot of this area has multiple uh acknowledged wetlands, even small ones here and here. So. When the public in their testimony talked about the wetlands on the side, that's what they're referring to as well. So we just wanted to make. Uh, this known. That we have a lot of things on this site. And so I I I'm going to turn this back over to Lauren now. I'll stop sharing unless she wants me to leave something up. She wants to point to to explain about the goal five and history and how we got to this point with the uh scenic sites working paper.
Thanks, Nick. I don't, I don't need you to continue to share.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't hear anything for a few seconds if.
Oh, you can stop sharing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sometimes for my hearing. Okay.
So um, I'm happy to. To talk about goal five and kind of give the commission some background, I guess. I I also don't want to. Overburden the commission if you are feeling good, so um. Maybe commissioners, do you have specific questions or what's the? What's the best way to go about this? Commissioner Ramey? Oh, sorry, Charlie.
Commissioner Ramey. Thank you. See, I was waiting. So to me, and I think to many people who follow this issue. The end game, where we've ended up seems to be exactly the opposite of of what goal five was set to be. We're actually removing all restrictions to that um wooded area. So I just wanted to be sure I understand that I I think I know the circumstance that led us to here. Um, but but just from my own conscience, and then as we're going forward from here. How did we get here in, you know, in a paragraph or less, if you're on an elevator? And then um, no, you don't need to say how we can get out of it, I guess. Just say how we got here. That that'd be most helpful. That's that's what I would like.
Okay, so I can't guarantee a paragraph or less, but I will try to keep it succinct. Um. So. Goal five, along with most of the statewide planning goals, was adopted back in the seventies. And shortly thereafter, um. Eugene, Land County and Springfield started working on the metro plan, the comprehensive plan that at the time. Applied to all three jurisdictions, or at least within the urban growth boundaries of Eugene and Springfield. Um. As. So just to set the context, the land use system, the Oregon land use system at the time was very new, right? Goal five had just been adopted. And so this was the jurisdictions kind of. Trying to figure out what it meant to have a comprehensive plan and what it meant to try to comply with the goals and and all of those things. And so. The um, the work that was done back then looks probably pretty different than the work that would be done today. To identify a list of goal five resources. Um, even the work that was done in two thousand and five with the WR. Water Resources Conservation Overlay. In part because there wasn't a lot of guidance at the time. It was very new to everyone. You know, people were just kind of. Doing what they could to try to comply with these statewide planning goals. So um, that some of the documentation that we're talking about tonight is very, it's old, more than forty years old. Um, and it doesn't necessarily neatly align with the um. Requirements in the. Like LCDC's administrative rules related to the statewide planning goals that are in effect today because they weren't in effect at that time. Um, but kind of generally. What the jurisdictions did was to. Identify. A list of types of resources that goal five required us to look at. Um, and to go out and inventory those resources within the urban growth boundaries of the two cities. And. Then to decide kind of. The level of protection that was required for those resources, if there were any conflicting uses and. You know, how, yeah, how much, what kind, what level of protection were we talking about? Totally protected, no development up to um. The resource could still remain even with some development and goal five spans a lot of different types of resources. So. It includes things like the protected waterway on the site where um. You know, in two thousand and five, the city made a determination that. Those types of waterways really do need to be protected to some extent from development. That development would be a conflicting use. Um, but goal five also encompasses things like sand and gravel resources, which are extractive by their very nature. But they also get some protection under that goal. And then. The resource that we're talking about tonight are scenic sites and vistas. So it was really like. What does the ridgeline look like from downtown Eugene? What is the view? That the city was trying to protect back in the nineteen seventies. And. So those types of resources don't necessarily. Need the same amount of protection. There is still some development that can happen. And it wouldn't necessarily affect. The view of the ridgeline unless you're talking about, you know, like a a big skyscraper right on top of the ridgeline. But in this case, we're talking about. Single uh unit development. We're talking about middle housing. Um. So. Those things can happen in concert with some goal five protections. So that's kind of one piece of the puzzle. The other piece is um. There are two, you know, as you well know, there, when someone is developing housing. They have a choice between two sets of approval criteria. We have our. Housing clear and objective approval criteria and our general approval criteria. And state law says that the applicant is entitled to use clear and objective approval criteria. But they can opt into a general, more subjective set of criteria, which typically are more flexible and allow for more. Options because. The requirement for clarity and objectivity typically means like it's got to be a yes or no answer. It's got to be a number. It's got to be something that is very specific and clear. So um. In terms of. Goal five protections, our code says. If you choose the clear and objective track. And your site is protected by goal five. You, the applicant, are not required to make a demonstration. Of compliance with the tree removal criteria in chapter nine, and we'll get to it as a later appeal issue, the geotech. Criteria in chapter nine. That doesn't mean that the applicant is never required. To show compliance with tree removal criteria or geotech criteria. We have criteria that live in other places in the code, not in chapter nine. That will come into play when the site is developed. So. An applicant would even. Even an applicant for a clear and objective PUD with a site that is entirely covered by goal five. Does still need to get a tree removal permit when they decide to build on the property or. Right, this would be building too, but install infrastructure. Um. They still need to comply with building code, which requires that the buildings be safe, which might require some sort of geotechnical analysis for the um. What you got? The the thing that the house stands on, the foundation, there you go. And if they're, you know, putting in a street as part of the PUP process, um, there's some. Engineering and geotech requirements there too. So uh, I guess that's all to say. Even though the clear and objective track. Kind of carves out compliance with or demonstrations of compliance with chapter nine requirements. It doesn't mean that the development. Is completely free of compliance with those types of um. Those types of regulations. So, yeah, that was a long elevator ride, but hopefully that's a little bit helpful.
So I, maybe I can just summarize back to make sure I'm understanding. So in a very simple terms. We wouldn't worry about the tree preservation requirements because it's under goal five, but that doesn't mean that those environmental protections aren't going to be covered. In the course of reviewing the development's impact.
I think that's right. There, you know, there are some differences between what's required under chapter six of our code in terms of true removal permits and the. Tree standards that live in chapter nine of the code. They're not exactly the same, but. It it's not a free path to get entirely out of. Compliance with standards for tree removal or for geotech requirements. I don't know, Gabe, if you wanted to add anything. Your mic is okay.
I'd be happy to. So I, you know, I think the practical effect is that um, oh, I think. All of what you said is correct in that by virtue of being on the scenic sites map, they get um, they they're exempt from the tree standards as part of the review of the. Entire PUD, like the whole cloth sort of comprehensive look under the, in the context of those standards. And I'll also point out, you know, clear and objective. Standards for tree preservation or something that um would kick in in, you know, in in the event that it was not part of the scenic sites map. All that said is um. It's true that when they get to the permitting stage, that we'll have. A look at individual components of the project as they proceed. And so it can come in different shapes and sizes and. We then look at the tree standards in chapter nine and chapter six to determine at that point, depending on what's the size of the lot, how many trees are they cutting? Do do they trigger the tree removal permit requirements? And so it's uh, arguably somewhat piecemeal compared to. Looking at the PUD in the context of the 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 whole site and the criteria there. Um, but it is true that they will be subject to those standards sort of on the back end. And that's true with respect to geotech as well. Uh, but subject to sort of building code level review as opposed to the the PUD as a site. So maybe that context helps a little more. I know it's complicated, but I think in the end, the other important thing is that it's it's clear to staff, and I think we also have. Case law history discussed in the final order that kind of supports our affirmation that the scenic sites map is acknowledged. It is the right. Map to use and that we think we're we're spot on in terms of locating where it is on that map. So based on what's in the record, so.
Gabe, um, we've got Commissioner Bailing and Commissioner Isaacson, and I guess I would also just say, just sort of almost in response to myself that, you know. It's it's great to be able to look at these issues, but some of this may also be a bit beyond what we're tasked with actually examining in terms of the appeal issues. Commissioner Bailing?
This might fall into that last category. I I am much more concerned about. The goal five. Removing the requirement for geological and geotech, and Gabe said that would all be looked at. In the building permit, but if you're not considering the entire site. What about? What the hearing official said about the. Landslide susceptibility and the city's adopted landslide hazard map. And. There was testimony that this entire site is in grave danger. And that's a huge concern to me. If we remove the. If we allow the goal five designation to remove the requirements. For geological and geotechnical analysis of the entire site. And you're filling wetlands. How do we ensure the safety? Of. You know, the individual sites. I I don't think you can look at that individually. I think it has to be looked. For the uh project overall. Especially if it's a hazard zone. And is there a city that, I mean, that. I'm sorry, I'm not speaking very clearly. The hearings official mentioned the city's adopted Eugene landslide hazard map. And um. There was uh testimony, I think. Julie Butler. Talked about the landslide hazard. And and I really would like to hear that addressed.
I'll take a uh, a crack at that just to start. Again, kind of coming back to what I was explaining, what Lauren was explaining about this carve out. You know, in the PUD criteria under the clear and objective standards, they're effectively exempt from that, that um. The geotechnical standards at this time is part of the PUD. Now, some commissioners, I don't know if you were on the commission at the time, Commissioner Bailing, but. Through the review and development of our clear and objective standards, there's a really deep dive and a look at making our um. Um, you know, our standards more robust in regards to clear and objective review. And so how do we do that when we're talking about things like? Um, you know, public safety in general, right? Uh, and so one of the things that that the city did, and I think it's a matter of, you know, legislative history and code. That I can mention this, I mean, that and it's mentioned in the testimony, we do have an adopted landslide hazard map. The unfortunate circumstance here is that we cannot reach to that map because it is on the Goal Five inventory. And so if they're exempt from those geotechnical standards where that map is codified, we can't rely on that to require that level of analysis. So it's, I mean, in some respects, I can understand a perspective that it might be a dissatisfying result. I too would like to test out those new standards. But in this particular set of facts and circumstances, based on the clear and objective path, the fact that it's on the scenic sites map, we can't rely on that map. So that's the kind of the straightforward factual answer.
And I'll just that correlates Goal Five and Goal Seven. And isn't there a possibility of Goal Seven overriding Goal Five in some cases like this one?
So I'll get to your, I will respond to your question, Commissioner Bailing, but before I do, I just want to kind of again, remind the commission of the sideboards that are imposed on you by the procedural posture of this appeal. So the appeal issue is really limited to is this entire site a Goal Five protected resource because it is identified on the city's acknowledged Goal Five inventory? And the question for the commission is, that's kind of distilled down through the hearings official, is is map H two part of the city's acknowledged Goal Five inventory? And does the subject property, is it shown on map H two as a protected site? As you've identified, there's a lot that sort of flows from that in terms of which criteria then become applicable to the application. But those questions are not for the planning commission in this instance. The only real question for the planning commission is is map H two a part of the inventory and is the subject shown on map H two? And I think this is something that, well, I know this is something that has come up for planning commission in previous quasi judicial appeals where, you know, you see a code provision that you don't love or you don't love in a particular circumstance. And that can be frustrating when you can't reach to it as part of the quasi judicial appeal process. You, there is an opportunity for planning commission to weigh in on those code provisions, but not here. That would be a legislative process. And so as hard as it is, what we're really asking you to do is to to separate kind of what specifically is being asked of you in this circumstance. And also this may give you some ideas about code changes that you'd like to see in the future or ways that you would like to see the code treat applications differently in the future. So all that said, in terms of your question about Goal Five and Goal Seven, first of all, this type of application, a PUD application, unlike some of the legislative decisions that you've been asked to look at recently, we don't apply the statewide planning goals directly. We only apply our code requirements to these decisions. There's no opportunity to reach all the way back to the statewide planning goals. The way that the land use system is works is that every city adopts a comprehensive plan that LCDC has to decide complies with the statewide planning goals, and they do that by acknowledging the plan. And then the city adopts land use regulations that comply with its comprehensive plan and therefore with the statewide planning goals. And then land use applications have to comply with the city's land use regulations. There are a few types of land use applications, including code amendments where we have decided in our code that they need to show compliance with the statewide planning goals, but this is not one of them. So we don't reach all the way back to the planning goals. We only look at the criteria that are in the land use code.
Okay. We'll go with Commissioner Isaacson.
Okay. I mean, to me, it seems, let me ask you, I guess, this question. What would have been the process to formally adopt the year H two forty seven years ago?
So I think some of this is in the record. There was, oh, the recreation of the inventories, the figure was part of the package that was submitted to the Land Conservation and Development Commission to say, hey, here are the things that we think that we have done that show compliance with Goal Five. Land Conservation and Development Commission or DLCD staff really looked at it and said, yep, seems good, or we need some more information over here. And then at the end of all of that process, the package was acknowledged. I think part of the confusion around which map is applicable and when the when the applicant was initially making the argument, which they have since stepped away from, that a different map should be applied is because it was kind of a piecemeal process. And so at the end of it, LCDC DLCD said, yep, sounds great. Your package is acknowledged. But the package was a bunch of different communications back and forth over time. And so it's it has been staff's practice, I think, I mean, since since I have been at the city to use the scenic sites working paper and figure H two as part of that working paper as part of the city's adopted acknowledged Goal Five inventory. That was recognized as part of the acknowledged Goal Five inventory by Luba in some litigation around the adoption of the city's land use code update in 2001. And it was also acknowledged by the city council in 2005, when they adopted the water resource overlay. In that ordinance, the council took the opportunity to say, this is the list of all of the things that we think that, well, that we as the city consider to be part of our acknowledged inventories. Here's the list. And one of the things on the list was the scenic sites working paper. So I would say staff feels very comfortable that that is part of the city's acknowledged Goal Five inventory. And even the hearings official found that the working paper was part of the inventory. Her only question was is map H two the right map? Is it part of the working paper? And as you'll see in the staff report for the public hearing and in the draft final order, staff has kind of outlined in specific detail why they think, yes, that that map was associated with the scenic sites working paper, the way it's titled, the things that are shown on it. All of those things make sense that it is part of the scenic sites working paper. It is part of the acknowledged Goal Five inventory. And then Nick showed you kind of the analysis that staff did to determine that, yep, the the site is part of the scenic sites as shown on that map H two. That answer your question?
It does. I mean, the fact that Luba has weighed in on this weighs on me greatly because they're obviously the the body that would review our work. And so that that has some impact on me, I guess. Given that it's come up in, I mean, where I I'm hoping I'm not drifting out of bounds here by asking this, Lauren, but given that this has come up in multiple appeals and it's forty seven years old, why hasn't it been formally adopted? I mean, if it's been come up as as an issue multiple times, why hasn't the city council or a previous planning commission said, we're going to put this to bed right now, we're going to formally adopt the H two map as as part of the inventory so that there is no question going forward?
It's a good question.
If they haven't done it, then they acknowledge that it wasn't part of part of the process.
So I can defer to Gabe and Alyssa to see if I'm misremembering, but I I don't believe this specific issue really has come up in an appeal before. And I would say that, you know, like, like I just said, Luba acknowledged that acknowledged, excuse me, that figure H two is part of the inventory. So we have that. And the council did say, hey, the scenic sites working paper is part of our inventory. So we have that. I I think it's never been a question in staff's mind until now.
We're quick, Paul, before we get Steph's input. How would Luba have ruled that it's part that is part of our inventory if it's not been part of an appeal?
Oh, I'm sorry. So there wasn't when the land use code update was adopted in 2001, some of the appeal issues around that, the whole new land use code had to do with whether or not they affected Goal Five resources. And so Luba said, it, you know, here, here are the things that make up the city's Goal Five inventory, but it wasn't a question really of like, is map H two part of the city's Goal Five?
It was like encompassing, but it wasn't directly on 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 point.
Yeah.
And I'll just add to Lauren's comments to say, yeah, her sense of confidence in using the right map, H two is the right map is I think solidified by city council's adoption of the map specifically and expressly within the ordinance in 2005 that sort of set the stage most recently for what's in our Goal Five inventory. That that ordinance two oh five three one, I forget the, I might have transposed the number. It's in the record and it very specifically lists the scenic sites working paper map. So that's a settled matter to us. And yeah, to the point that it's it's been the source of contention on appeal. Yeah, I can recall from experience that dating back quite a number of years, but not, yeah, I won't bring in the specifics here, but it's certainly been a topic of of appeal argument one way or the other in past cases. So but we're confident that, you know, it's it's adopted, it's acknowledged locally and that Luba's also affirmed that. My last kind of comment back to Gabe, and this is, I will let Commissioner Beeson kind of time in is given that there's been this kind of back and forth and it and it feels like it was put in as part of the package back in nineteen seventy eight, that it wasn't specific enough for fifty two year, forty, forty seven years later, you know, for for multiple issues. We've just kind of gone along with the the premise, the premise of practice and precedent that it's been included, but it hasn't been on point that this I I don't know how much of if this development were to go into place, would be would be left be up for conversation in future development. But if there is some, I would I would say we need to put it to bed one way or the other. So it just gets this thing out, you know, off the off the conversation on point. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Beeson?
I guess I, yeah, a couple of comments. I kind of added to my comments says I've been listening since I put my hand up. I I I think it's really important that the planning commission, when they deliberate, it's really good that we're able to walk through and talk about things as we understand them and have explanation and have discussion. And that remains a part of the permanent record. It's also something that there's a lot of people who've been very interested in this over just even the last year or half year. And and this has been an issue. And so I think I appreciate Commissioner Ramey's question and the discussion by by Lauren on kind of the origin of some of this stuff. I think it's helpful. I I also kind of in balance to that, I mean, I think the the chair talked about trying to stay within the side rails and I think Lauren did too. I keep, I come back and I, not to state the obvious, but I think this is appeal issue number two, which in my mind is it was pretty straightforward. If we were, I I think the idea of finding that this is a goal, the entirety of this property is in the Goal Five inventory. And because of that, it's exempt from the tree preservation ordinance. And we'll get to geotechnical, I think, on appeal item. I don't know, seven or eight, somewhere down the list here. But I think I think it's important to, you know, keep kind of focused on those. I'm I'm also like Commissioner Isaacson. It resonated with me quite a bit that Luba had weighed in on this. The way I read all of it, as I looked at it, I think the city of Eugene's staff has consistently said and maintained in writing or in presentations or wherever that this is a Goal Five, the Goal Five resource. The I I took it that Luba, in fact, LCDC, I think I read the Eugene City Council in whenever, again, two thousand six or five had an ordinance that, and I took it that they were all kind of weighing in on this and supporting, in fact, that staff position. So when Gabe said, you know, I I felt pretty, I felt good, very good that the city has been pretty clear about this. So I, you know, with that, I'm I'm as with the first one, I guess I'm ready to reverse the hearings official determination on this and find that the property is in a Goal Five, the Goal Five inventory list and is not therefore subject to the tree preservation and removal ordinance.
Okay, looks like we've got Commissioner Ramey on deck, and I was just going to add a comment as well. There are a lot of considerations and there are a lot of weighty implications for the future of development in our community. But trying to put the blinders on and kind of focus on the specific question. Is it, is it included in that working paper? Does the city justifiably treat that working paper as the basis for determining whether it is exempt from those Goal Five standards in this phase of the evaluation? And the argument has been laid out pretty clearly in hearing both sides. I would say at this point, I'm definitely in agreement with Commissioner Beeson. Commissioner Ramey?
Well, thank you, Chair. So I did ask the question. I I greatly appreciate you all hanging in there while we got this discussion. Stanford, this particular issue should be primary in our minds as we think about the the implications or the intention of Goal Five. And so that that's kind of why I'm a little, I'm very disappointed in in where we've ended up as a community. Not, I mean, I I get this, I'm I'm all for the straw poll. I get the the, you know, the sort of technical where we're going and that all makes sense to me. What doesn't make sense to me is why would we identify something as a resource in our community and then not protect it in any way? It just seems, I I don't understand how that's possible. And this site has a waterway which is protected, but it has wetlands which are not protected. And it has this view corridor, we're going to call it, that fuzzy green thing on that map. There don't appear to be any protections for that. And if you think Chapter Six is a protection, you want to go read that. That is the, you cannot clear cut your site, basically. There are not protections in that that really speak to what what we were thinking of when we were thinking of this as a goal, as a resource to the community. Ridgeline should be treated differently, et cetera, et cetera. So yes, I'm straw poll, yes, in in favor of what we're doing here. And I greatly appreciate you letting me ramble on here about the quality of life in Eugene. Thanks.
It's so interesting that this turns on what's nearly, you could describe it as Byzantine footnote in a nineteen seventy eight paper. So it's definitely a really interesting academic discussion. Nick?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I do want to, in the interest of as one of the commissioners said, that that we have this record that we're that we're doing and it's on record. I do want to correct something that I showed you and and mention it so that we do get something corrected. And I apologize because I realized that I had the wrong thing up here. I'm just going to share real quick one of the slides. And you'll see right here, I had put a balloon or a little call out and called that prominent plentiful vegetation. It's actually natural sites of visual prominence. Both things, along with some others, are part of a legend that are identified as something that triggers the being a Goal Five. So the prominent and plentiful vegetation is this brown area. This blue clouded or little blue circles is natural sites of visual prominence. And I think Lauren alluded to that too in her her comments. She called it net, you know, the ridge line and the view. So I just wanted to clarify that so there's no confusion.
All right, maybe it's time for us to take a straw poll on this second appeal issue regarding whether it's included in the Goal Five scenic sites inventory and therefore excluded from the Goal Five tree preservation standards. All those planning commissioners All those planning commissioners who are in favor of reversing the hearing official, officials' decision.
Commissioner Lear, real quick, just, just, uh, are we locked into this vote or are we?
Um, so all those who would be, uh, in favor of reversing the hearings official officials' decision with regard to this finding can raise your hand. It looks like we've got a vote of one, two, three, four to two in the straw poll. If I'm seeing everybody's hands correctly.
I haven't made up my mind yet.
Okay. Four to one. So do we want to note abstentions here to all those opposed part of the straw poll? And then it looks like we've got a couple of abstentions then. So thank you for that. Nick, did you still have something to add or do you want to jump into the next subject? You got your mute on there? You're muted, Nick?
There we go. Caught on the mute. Thank you. Um, no, did you want to go on to the next issue? I
Seems like we're ready to go on to, uh, issue number three.
Okay. Again, I need to scroll through. You get to that issue. And, uh, peel issue number three is that the applicant argues that the hearings official aired when making a finding of compliance with the secondary emergency access standard. Where she imposed a condition prohibiting any parking on the streets with, uh, twenty one foot of paving. So she found compliance with secondary emergency access standard with a condition, as I said, prohibited parking on both sides of the street based on, input from the, uh, Eugene Springfield Fire Marshal's Office. What we're recommending is, uh, you modify the decision and find the site does comply with our secondary emergency access standards and the parking prohibition condition is not needed. One of the caveats to this is that the, uh, fire code is not part of the, uh, Eugene code and we don't have the ability to, to, to reach to that through our code. Uh, also the fire department at the time of, uh, when the streets are built and building permit, uh, they have the ability to require no parking lanes at that time. And that's when we think that should happen. So I don't know if Gabe wants to add anymore on this. It's, uh, please feel free, Gabe, if you need to say anything else.
Yeah, I think Nick, you might have a slide that helps to provide a little context and I might speak to that. Um, so what we've explained in the draft final order is that, yeah, in fact, we think she got it, the hearing official got it wrong in terms of, uh, the condition related to fire lane signage. Because of the independence of the fire code, it has its separate authority. Uh, we'd want to reassure the commission, yes, that that will kick in at the time of future permitting, but that, you know, the code standard that's actually cited and is at issue here is really specific to, you know, the, the ability to get to the site for more than one direction. You know, and at simplest terms, you look at the map and maybe Nick can kind of point to it. Yeah. From Hawkins to Randy Lane. And then by virtue of that intersection to Blacktail, um, the traveling public would have more than one way to get to and from the site that on Blacktail and albeit a circuitous route would provide access all the way back over to Chambers to the east or from Hawkins down to eighteenth. And so just simply by virtue of its location at that intersection, the standard is met. Uh, and so for that reason, uh, we don't see the need or the, the legal authority, code authority to reach to the condition that she, uh, had recommended, um, to implement the signage requirements at this stage of the process. Thanks for showing that, Nick. That's all I have.
Nick, if you don't have anything else, we'll open it up to planning commissioners for deliberation. And I know this was, uh, another subject that engendered a lot of commentary and really strong opinions. But it seems again that we have a relatively narrow view of the issue that we're looking at here. So does anyone else want to make any comments or ask any questions of staff on this one? Doesn't look like we have any at the moment. This, do we want to take a straw poll? So all those who would be in favor, and again, this is an informal vote at this point of reversing the hearings official with regard to appeal issue three. Um, scrolling down to the AS to make sure I'm tracking this on mine. Okay. Please raise your hands now. It looks like we've got one, two, three, four, five, six. So everybody present voting yes. So we don't have to move any further on that one. And that will bring us over to appeal issues four regarding the applicant's evidence in the second open record period rebutting that the applicant had not justified an exception on, uh, connection to Randy Lane. Nick, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah. So this, uh, the applicant is arguing that the hearings official aired not considering, uh, again, this points back to the evidentiary issue in appeal issue one. Uh, but that the applicant's evidence submitted it back in August, uh, of twenty twenty four during the second open record period. It was rebutting Public Works' first open record evidence. Based dated July thirty first and it, it might be July thirtieth. I think there was an issue about that, but, uh, I think the, uh, it's either July thirtieth or thirty first and Gabe can correct me if, on this one, but I think, uh, it was submitted on the thirty first, but the actual, uh, referral comments were dated the thirtieth and that might have led to some confusion. Applicant had not justified an exception allowed under, uh, our code to connect to Randy Lane. So because the hearings official rejected all that evidence in the second open record period, which in our opinion shows that they demonstrated an exception was, uh, they were qualified for an exception under EC nine, six, eight, one, five, two. And it was based on the existing grades and slopes over twenty percent and found the exception could not be granted. And I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about this. What we're asking, uh, the commission to do is modify that decision. And because you've already in your straw poll talked about all that evidence uh, was responsive and could be admitted where our, uh, analysis is that they have demonstrated with the evidence they submitted at that time that they can qualify for the exception because of the grades and slopes over twenty percent. Prior to the, uh, to the second open record period, they had put materials in, in the, in the, uh, initial phase uh, of this application that they were qualified with an exception for no development over, uh, nine hundred and one feet, which they had used in the previous iteration of this back in twenty eighteen, but, uh, because of other issues, we've said that that was not going to be applicable anymore. And let me show, I still can't get, there we go. So what we're talking about is right here, Randy Lane, as they proposed it as a private street then in their materials ends right here. And then there's a turnaround right here. And what we're talking about is this ability to extend up and connect to the piece of Randy Lane that exists over here that's already constructed, but ends right here at the property. You can kind of see the topographies here, which are one foot topographies. It gets extremely steep through this area. Till you get up to right here and then it starts, it's like a little ridge right here and it starts going back the other way, but they cannot meet the street standards of less than twenty percent in the way this is configured now. Um, and so that's, uh, that's all I have to say about this. If there's anything else that Gabe might want to add.
Happy to, uh, so again, this, this is an issue as noted in the appeal issue that, that sort of relates back to appeal issue number one. And so by virtue of having accepted the applicant's evidence that was submitted during the second open record period, you know, we looked at that. We found that it was responsive to, to our suggestion that they, they asked for the wrong exception, you know, that they, the exception over nine hundred feet, that's really based on a prohibition of development. They solely in the PUD criteria. We'll get to that under appeal issue nine. But really it wasn't a codified basis for an exception. And, you know, we go through and explain, you know, the precise ways in which they can. Uh, one of which is to demonstrate the, the, the slopes exceed twenty percent existing grades, right? And so they came back in that second open record period with an engineer's analysis kind of showing they could prove up on that exception. So you know, in that open record period, we found they actually asked the right question based on the right uh, exception and had the right evidence to show that they, they deserved the exception. Uh, and so by virtue of that, I think our, our recommendation kind of turns on that question. And if they had asked for that, provided that evidence in the initial, you know, um, submittal, they probably would have got it. So that's sort of how we got here in terms of, you know, why did we, you know, maybe disagree along the way and land at this, at this place? Um, but we think now there's sufficient evidence in the record to, to justify the right exception. Now we'll talk more about why that doesn't necessarily mean Randy Lane, uh, uh, could be private. Or, you know, why we think it's still justified as a public street. We, we see that as a separate, uh, question we'll get to next, but um, just in terms of the street connectivity thing, um, we think we have the evidence now to grant that exception. But not necessarily in a way that would preclude any future possibility for the street to connect through. And I think that's kind of a teaser relating to the next question about whether it should be public. And when you have Randy Lane, you know, public street essentially constructed and pointing at the site in two directions, the code says that the street should be public unless they get the exception for slopes. Um, but I think, you know, another consideration, we'll talk about a little bit more about Randy Lane is the fact that we're not foreclosing on the possibility that it could theoretically be constructed and connected in some, uh, future, uh, set of circumstances. So, um, we think they've got the evidence for the exception. And so that's why our recommendation is reflected that way.
I guess I, one little technical question. So when we did our straw poll on issue one, we were addressing whether or not the additional evidence was wrongfully rejected, but not whether or not that evidence necessarily displays, you know, or convinces us to make a change from the policy. And I guess the, the one little sort of technical thing that seemed maybe a little bit unclear on this one was whether or not this evidence was responsive, which is the thing I would, I guess, key in a little bit more.
Yeah. Um, so we found, and I, I think we detailed it in our summary under appeal issue one, but that it was responsive to staff's recommended condition, which we submitted during the open, first open record period. We said, hey, they asked for the wrong, uh, the exception or the wrong standards. And so to, to prove up on that, they either need to ask for the exception in the right way under subsection two H or alternatively get an adjustment review under the cleared objective standards. They came back, gave us the evidence to show, yeah, we're proving up on, on the slopes. And that was one of the specific ways they could get the exception. And so what we see is then our concern for, and the need for that condition of approval is lifted. So
Did not lose the ability to bring in this claim as a result of not bringing it up originally. Is that said more articulately perhaps, but that's sort of the one little connection point I was wondering about reading through the materials. Go ahead, Lauren. Yeah.
So right, Commissioner Lear, I think, um, I think I understand your question. So I'm going to kind of try to draw the line between all of the pieces and you, you tell me if that actually answers your question. Um, so in appeal issue one, the applicant was saying, look, the hearings official should have considered this evidence that the applicant submitted during the second open record period, including evidence that the slopes in this case are more than twenty percent. Um, because it was responsive to testimony that came in during the first open record period. It was specifically responsive to the city of Eugene's proposed condition around either in city of Eugene noticing that we thought that they had chosen the wrong reason for an exception. And so proposed a condition that said either prove that you can meet one of the right reasons for an exception or do an adjustment. And then the applicant came back and said, oh, I see. Here's the evidence showing that we deserve an exception under the right reason. This is responsive to your testimony in the first open record period. So planning commission has, at least by straw poll, determined that you feel like that evidence should have been considered. It was responsive. Um, and so now you can take that evidence and apply it to this new appeal issue, which is is that condition that was proposed by the city and imposed by the hearings official even necessary anymore? Because look, look at the evidence that we provided you that the hearings official didn't look at, but planning commission will, at least by straw poll and say, this evidence shows that the, it's too steep, we can't build the road and so we deserve an exception. And you don't need to have this condition anymore that says, show us that we need an exception because we already showed you. You're muted, Commissioner Lear.
So you'd be basically allowed to, to switch to a different exception if it's shown that your first exception is not valid. That would be standard part of the process.
In this case, yes, because of the timing of all, the way it all happened. Um, there might be a, a different scenario where it was too late, the record was truly closed or something else. But in this case, it works because the city identified the problem in the first open record period. The applicant responded to the problem in the second open record period. Planning commission has indicated that they will find that responsive evidence is okay during the second open record period. So you'll consider that evidence. And then you can look at that evidence and say, oh, yep, they did show that it's too steep to build a road. And so they deserve this exception and the condition is no longer necessary.
Yeah, I'm with you on all that. I, I'm just trying to make that connection about whether it's responsive and trying to understand better what, how do you constitute or something that is effectively responsive in accordance with that definition? Uh, Commissioner Isaacson?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's pretty clear that it falls under the exception of, what is it? Nine, nine point six, eight, one, five, two, H two. And moreover, that the city has, has a precedent of granting the exceptions under that. So that's, that's the guiding principle that I'm, I'm working off of here. I, I, I don't think it's a good, very good practice to bounce back and forth between precedent. So I'm, I'm in a favor.
Any other comments from other commissioners? Should we move on to a vote? Not seeing anything else. So all those, oh, Commissioner Belling, you want to jump in?
I, I just wanted to add that it is possible to build roads on steep slopes and even though they're applying for an exception because our codes allow it, there are ways to get up and down steep slopes with switchbacks and not build road at twenty percent. So it can be done. And if I'm hearing you right, you're saying it's the planning commission that's now determining their entitlement to the exception because the hearings official didn't get this evidence. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Do we as a planning commission agree that this exception should be granted?
Well, if I could again, help frame the question, it's, it's not really about whether it's a good idea or whether or not they, you know, someone could or couldn't build a road with a grade of that steepness, steepness. I don't know if that's a word. Um, but it is, do they, you know, have they provided evidence to show that they meet the criteria for the exemption? And and I also just want to be clear that the exemption means, what the exemption means is that the city cannot require them to build a road. It doesn't mean that no one in the future could build a road. Uh, someone could choose to. There are ways to, as you point out, design roads differently. Um, and someone could also, you know, in the future, apply for a new P U D using different criteria and that decision might be different. But here, based on the applicable criteria, the question is, have they provided, has the applicant provided evidence to show that they are entitled to the exemption? Which means the city cannot require them to build a road.
Okay, so let's take a straw poll now, and this is whether to modify the hearing official's decision um, to accept this evidence that was rejected and in accepting it uh, to note that they have met the requirements for the exception. Uh, all of those in favor of modifying the decision with regards to appeal issue four, please raise your hand. And that's everybody. We're on to the next issue, number five. Nick?
Thank you. So this is basically two appeal issues wrapped into one because they're so closely related. The applicant is arguing that the hearings official aired in concluding that the applicant failed to show there is no need for the extension of Randy Lane to be developed to public road standards. And then the other part of that was that the applicant also argued that the hearings official erroneously rejected the applicant's argument that the road stub is not justified under constitutional law standards. And I'm I I'm probably not the one to talk about constitutional law standards, but the very brief overview of that is, uh, it's been determined that the United States Supreme Court through something called Nolan and Dolan cases in the past, that whenever the city says you got to do something and make it public, that means give it to the public. You have to demonstrate that there's a a nexus between the impact that you've created and the public's need to have you give up something, property or money, whatever it is. So we made findings that the hearings official found uh, met that constitutional law standard as well as our um, our uh, code requirements and found that Randy Lane should be a public street for the extension of it. Um, and we're asking you to uphold that decision. We're we're calling it modify that decision because we've got a condition proposed to ensure that that be a a public street. And what I'm talking about, if I can get my screen to react, which it doesn't seem to want to do. There we go. What I'm talking about is this is the existing part of Randy Lane and Blacktail that I've mentioned several times tonight. This right here is again from the um, application materials they submitted where they proposed rent this extension as a private street. Okay? And then come down here and have a little turnaround. To make this portion a public street, it has to expand a little bit. There's a little bit more right away involved when it becomes public. We have different standards than a private street. And that's what this art, this uh, the applicant's argument is that you will make, you know, if you do it as a public street, there'll have to be a sidewalk on one side, there'll have to be uh, street trees. There'll have to be uh, street lights, things like that. And with that, if Lauren wants to talk more about constitutional law or if Gabe wants to add anything, please feel free to do so.
Nick, I think you pretty well covered it. I think if there are questions from commissioners, I'd be happy to um, provide more context about, again, like how we came to this place where originally it seemed that the private street was acceptable. Uh, and 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 so we've kind of shifted our position based on the information we got in the open record period and through Public Works revised referrals, um, that there isn't indeed a public interest, even if the street doesn't connect to have it be public, being adjacent to the public park, making sure that the residents throughout this entire P U D have access to that park. Um, and all the reasons described in the final order, I won't try to articulate articulate those any better um, than is written there. Um, but for the myriad of reasons that we explained in the final order, we still find that there's a solid basis to require it as a public street. Um, and so, and I think part of that is the fact that, you know, the street connectivity standards, even with the exception, um, you know, they say that when you have a budding streets like this that are pointing at or through the site, that it need be public. And so what this is, part of the practical effect of it is that it doesn't foreclose the potential, like we were talking about under the prior appeal issue, that in theory, it could be connected as a public street someday. Um, and uh, you know, that exception on slopes was based on existing grades, not necessarily an engineered design that could be done differently. Again, those aren't facts and evidence in the record about, you know, the theoretical street that could connect. But for all the reasons we've explained in the final order, um, we think it's justified and we recommend that. Um, and I think the hearings official agreed uh, on all of that. Um, it's just that um, we would also be asking you, and we do um, through this recommendation to add those conditions to require that they actually dedicate the right, the forty foot right away width and have conditions that appropriately kind of um, lock them into a requirement to construct it to public street standards. So I'll stop there.
Commissioner Beeson, and then we can go Commissioner Edwards after that.
Yeah, I'm ready to support it. I I think I you answered my question, I think, right there in your last few words. I I think I wanted to uh, verify or clarify. I'm remembering uh, some testimony from the public hearing. There was some uh, uh, question and concern about emergency vehicles and clearances and all of that kind of thing. And the private street initially proposed, I can't read my drawing, it's way too small. I think what what you had on there was a twenty six foot right away, something like that. But I heard you, I I just want to ver- clarify that when we put a public street in there, it's a, the minimum width, I think you said is forty feet. But maybe another way to say it is that the minimum width of that street is going to be adequate for any emergency vehicle a- access and work and so on.
That is correct according to our public street standards in the code.
Okay, thanks.
And I just want to clarify, Commissioner Beeson, that the the forty foot right of way is the area that's dedicated to the public for street purposes. The street surface itself, what we think of as the street, will not be forty feet in width. It will be yeah, something less than that. But um, yes, our adoptive standards accommodate emergency vehicles.
No, I know, I think so. I'm reminded of that most every day in front of my house, so thank you.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you. I just had a question for staff. I'm hoping you guys could just kind of provide a quick um, explanation. There are two other streets that were allowed to um, remain private. And I'm wondering if you could just give a quick explanation as to what differentiates the Randy Lane street that um, from like Stonehenge Court and Stonehenge Way. Because, you know, I it it would just be helpful just for me to understand what's different about those in general. Does it have to do with the ac- the main access point or?
Yeah. It's a, it's a good question. I'll try to provide a little bit of the thinking behind it, um, as I can recall it. Um, and again, based on on materials in the record. But the, you know, the applicant had originally proposed those streets uh, internal to the site as private uh, and had appropriately submitted evidence to demonstrate it would be too steep. Uh, again, similar to this prior conversation about Randy Lane, but they asked the right, I mean, they provided the right evidence and they requested the exception in the right way based on slopes. And we also found that uh, unlike Randy Lane, where you have a public street pointing at the site in two, you know, on two ends, all that would do, well, to the north, it's it's fully developed with residential lots and it would just loop right back out to Hawkins Lane. So it wouldn't serve the same kind of, you know, valuable public purpose of connectivity. And so that's why it was an easier call in the initial staff recommendation to say, yeah, it's okay that those be private. So that's the distinction.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Commissioner Isaacson?
Yeah, um, this was, this one's nearly the top of my list of of problems that I have. Um, I mean, I I get staff's feelings about um, the amount of space for emergency vehicles. But we have a city councilor who ran the fire department, who testified to us, it's not. You know, and so to me, that that information is uh, is about as is important to me as Luba's testimony. Um, as somebody who also fought fire, as somebody who uh, helped evacuate forty different people during the ice storm last year. Um, and uh, the Holly Farm Fire and everything else. Uh, this one has concerns for me. Um, you know, I I and I'm all for middle housing, I'm all for development. I I can somebody explain the difference to me from staff on why you think it's within the the framework for for the fire department, but the former fire chief doesn't?
I will start the conversation or at least a response there and I hope that Lauren jump in. But I'm with all due respect and 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 gratitude and appreciation for Councilor Groves, former fire chief, to come testify in the way that he did. Um, you know, I know that resonates with with me with a lot of folks in terms of kind of current events out there and evacuation routes and the like. Um, and what what I would share with you is that, just as a matter of of law, again, not the lawyer in the virtual room here, but based on experience with past appeals, um, I'm thinking of Capitol Hill P U D and some others. But and if if we need to pull in some more information into the final order on this, we may. Um, but the if, the 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 simple answer is effectively that our our codified standards for, I'll call them skinny streets, right? The the narrower street widths that he indicated some concern with, um, that by statute, our local codified street standards override that of the fire code, right? And so we locally, through our governing body, have decided that it's acceptable uh, to have street widths. It's as little as twenty or twenty one feet wide. You know, the typical minimum width for under fire code is twenty feet of passable space. Um, and so we, the standards are set that way. And I think that's why the fire marshals that came in and said, hey, we need signage to require no parking so that full width, albeit maybe narrower than some would like, uh, that that full width is available for vehicle passage. So um, that's kind of the factual legal context there. And Lauren, if you want to impart any clearer advice on that, um, please do. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's that's accurate, Gavin, Commissioner Isaacson. I will, I will just say again, like the broker knocker that I am, that um, emergency access, although understandably very important to the neighbors, is not an appeal issue in this case. The the code sections that we are looking at are a requirement that the street be public and a requirement for connectivity. Emergency access is a different code requirement, it's a different issue, and it's not an appeal issue that was raised by the applicant. Um, had the neighbors filed their own appeal, they might have raised it, um, but they didn't. And so you are constrained to the issues that were raised by the applicant.
That's it. Just a another question for you, Lauren. Um, so the neighbors would have had an opportunity to appeal based on the way that this reached us? And would they have any future opportunity to appeal since?
So they they also could have filed an appeal of the hearings official's decision. Everyone has a period of time, I think, twelve days or something, um, to file an appeal with the city. Um, in this case, only the applicant did. So so the only appeal issues that we're looking at. The any interested party, anyone who has been appearing in this local process could appeal the planning commission's decision. Um, but again, it will be limited to the issues considered by the planning commission. So an appeal generally sort of acts as a funnel to narrow the issues that are in contention. Um, so neighbors could participate in an appeal of the planning commission's decision, but they can't like open up the scope of issues that will be before Luba.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yeah. Lauren, so with regard to the emergency access, will that be like issue number three considered at permitting and as part of considering fire code? You know, you mentioned that in number three.
With the no. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I'll let Gabe or Nick speak to it in a little more detail, but the the short answer is yes. That the the fire marshal does participate in the sort of billing permit process and has the ability to invoke fire code requirements.
I don't really have much more to add. Um, I fully expect that the fire marshal's office will be reviewing each permit. And when the site development permit comes in for those streets that that they'll implement the fire code requirement for striping along the curb and the signs and all that. Um, it's just a matter of actually coming in for the permit and seeing the street design. And then they can locate the signage and where they where they prohibit parking. So it it, I would say it's it's safe. I'll reassure you that my understanding is yes, it would occur as part of future permitting.
Okay, if we don't have any other deliberation on this, do we want to take a straw poll on this issue, which is five and six? And the staff is recommending here that we affirm the decision of the hearings official, I got that right? Sorting through this correctly. Um, all those in favor, please raise your hands. We've got all voting in favor in the straw poll there. So we're getting toward the end of the meeting, but maybe we can get through uh, appeal issue seven, since that's kind of correlated to one that we've talked about earlier here. If you want to jump back into that one, Nick, we can try to see if we can get through it.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Um, yeah, this one is the the applicant argues that the hearings official aired requiring compliance with requirement for geotechnical certification uh, due to the applicant's failure to carry its burden of proof that the site is included in the city's technological five inventory. And again, this relates back to that issue number two, which I won't. I'll just, because she didn't find map H two in, could be in the record, then she couldn't find that it was all goal five. Therefore, the exemption that's in our code uh, would not have applied for geological and geotechnical analysis. So we're recommending that you modify based on what we've already talked about with appeal issue two and that figure H two is a document and this is a goal five site. It's on our inventory, therefore it is exempt from the requirements at uh, nine point eight three two five five D and for geological, geotechnical analysis. And I think we've all kind of been talking about that throughout the night in various ways. And I think I will end it there, but I'm sure Gabe's got more to add.
He's waving you off here.
Hey, only if there are questions and I'm I'm I'd be surprised if there weren't at this point, and we'd be welcome to take those.
I guess I would just comment that it looks like we made it, the the relevant finding already here tonight, at least in in the straw poll, we voted four to two, um, that we did agree it was part of that figure that included the the scenic sites. So I don't know that there's too much here to discuss, since it's basically, we've already found that. Looks like we we more or less have a similar duty in this case. But if if anyone's got opinions or deliberation or questions, please feel free to share them. Commissioner Bailey?
Um, my question is just the hearing officials finding before there was a determination of uh, goal five, that the application did not include any compliance with the um, E C nine point six seven one oh six about geotech. And that's a disconnect for me, since they were not contending it was goal five, but they didn't comply with this requirement.
I'll I'll jump in here, go ahead and and try to articulate what I what I think occurred. I believe that they um, they did believe that the the site was, an entire site was goal five and therefore initially had had asserted as much. It was actually uh, leading up to the hearing that the applicant um, introduced this map three and and some additional materials. But from the working papers and that, you know, that detailed history that Lauren was describing earlier. That I think introduced, I mean, this is my opinion, it introduced some confusion, uh, which we settled, we think. But, um, at, at least in terms of what we're re- recommending now, that the planning commission's determined H two is the right map. Uh, and so for that reason, based on the evidence and that conclusion, I don't think we could come up with a different answer and say, oh, you're. Subject to the, the geotech standards but not tree standards. And that's, so it sort of follows that. If H two is the right map and the site's on that map, it's the entire site's goal five, it also gets the, the geotech exemption. Irrespective of what the applicant may have said initially.
So let's see, it doesn't appear we have any other comments at this point, one of those similar situation. Result maybe seems a little counterintuitive. Commissioner Ramey might even say perverse. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but. When we're, we're looking at whether or not this is included. Um, we're just voting now in our straw poll as to whether or not this was part of the scenic sites working paper, whether or not that therefore designates it as part of a goal five resource. And it's therefore exempt from geotechnical standards. And would this be a modification or a reversal? It'd be good if we had a little.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we call it a modi- modification, but I guess it is a reversal.
Well, are we going to, um, do you want to clarify, Lauren? I don't know if it really matters too much.
Sure, I mean, it, it is a reversal of the portion of the hearings official's decision, finding that she couldn't tell if. H two was the right map and if the site was on the map H two. So, y- yes, I mean, a reversal of a portion of the, the decision. I think. It's a little bit off topic, but now might be a good time to just jump in and say, since it looks like we're heading into a second set of deliberations, I think. My plan, I, I've identified some pieces of the draft final order that could use a little polishing in terms of like. Grammatical issues, readability, some formatting, et cetera. So I would anticipate that when we come back to for second deliberations, you'll have a slightly updated version of the draft final order that is. You know, and we can also make an effort to really clarify, like, are we asking you to reverse this portion, modify this portion, et cetera? That you really understand the decision that we're proposing for you to make, and then you can decide if you agree with it.
Here it's really reverse and modify. I would just assert.
Okay, well, I think we're on the same page to those who are be in favor of reversing that portion of the hearings official's decision. Modifying the order, um, as stated in the draft order. And again, this is just a straw poll for now. Please raise your hand. We've got all commission members present voting in favor of that. Looks like it's probably a good time to, to, to leave it and go into our meeting close, unless you all want to try to squeeze another issue in here. I'll look to Lauren or Gabe, if you got some guidance on that.
Uh, just, just to forecast, I think, um, I mean, we've made tremendous progress. I really appreciate, um, that. And the efficiency that we've moved through these issues. You know, the stormwater question was a focus of a lot of testimony, it's kind of technical. That's the next one up on her, you know, appeal issue eight, right? Appeal issue nine is the question of the prohibition on development over nine hundred feet. Based on the clear and objective approval criteria, again, another potentially meaty topic. And staff's articulated all the reasoning and why we think, um, that it's approvable with conditions. And, 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 and I kind of put it back, back to you all to say, would you want to start chewing on those or ask questions about what you? Maybe, maybe some questions right now might facilitate future deliberations on that, but if, if. I think if the commission's ready, this would be a logical stopping point. And we can provide the kind of updates Lawrence describing, uh, kind of fine tune some of the final order and, and start again on appeal issue eight. It's really the preference of the commission. I think if we go over seven thirty, we'd want a, a motion to extend and make sure everybody could actually stay. So it's, it's sort of up to you.
I think we're all happy to conclude at seven thirty. It was a long meeting last week. Does anyone else have anyone with questions they want to put to staff or anything else they want to throw out for deliberations regarding eight and nine? So we can set the table for our next deliberation on this. Commissioner Beeson?
Uh, Nick, can you, could you share the slides with us tonight? Or could you send them to us?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
I would also just love like maybe a little table with all of the recommendations on each one, because it's just. Through all the material to make sure, totally understanding it might be helpful. Did you have anything else, Commissioner Beeson? Any other questions from planning commissioners that you want to put to staff regarding these upcoming items? Okay, well, uh, last on our agenda are items from commissioners and staff. Any items or info to share from commissioners? Not seeing any staff.
All right, uh, I just want to echo what Gabe said. Um, you guys have done an impressive job tonight on these deliberations. Awesome, really complicated, complex topics, so, um, and I was able to follow along, even though I haven't been that involved in that one, so, nor did I attend the hearing. So anyway, very impressive. Um, we are going to be huddling tomorrow to figure out when you will continue your deliberations. We do have two meetings set in February, both of which have topics right now. So we're going to maybe need to do some reshuffling, um, and we'll, we will be getting back to you soon about that. So you, your next meeting is February eleventh, and right now that's currently scheduled for an update on urban growth strategies. And then February twenty-fifth, um, at least half of the meeting would be the city's capital improvement program, just getting an update on that. I want to remind you that the plant, the recruitment for the vacant planning commission positions, uh, closes at the end of the week or the end of the month. So on the thirty-first, just heads up on that in case you were thinking about letting somebody know about it. They don't have a lot of time. So, and that is all I have, unless you have any questions for me.
Any other questions or any other items from anyone else on staff? Looks like we are able to say thank you. The meeting of the planning commission is now adjourned. Good recall.
Thank you. Good night.